It's seven P M. I'd like to call the May tenth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting to order because of COVID nineteen restrictions. Our meeting tonight will be held virtually via Zoom. Other comments for this meeting were accepted in advance by mail and email. These comments will be read into the public record shortly. If you'd like to submit a public comment for our next meeting, please visit W W W dot Merriam dot org O R G. And follow the directions listed there. I won't go through the standards of operation on the part of the council for meeting this evening. I think we've all gotten used to the Zoom format, so I'm going to forego that particular paragraph. If you have any questions, let me know. Also, as a reminder, there's a budget work session immediately following the regular meeting tonight. Once we adjourn from our regular meeting, we'll take a quick break and then go into the work session. We'll be using the same Zoom link that we're currently on. So at this point, I'm going to ask everybody to please join me as we show the flag on the screen for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And the rest of the republic, or which is one nation under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Very good. Julie, will you please call the roll? Here.
Councilmember Debold. Councilmember Debold.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Call.
Here.
Councilmember Knapp.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Silver's.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Julie, would you please read any public comments that were submitted in advance into the record?
There were no public comments submitted this evening, Mayor.
Very good, no public comments. And we'll move into our consent agenda. We have two items this evening. All items listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests it, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separate. Of the two items this evening, I think we all know what they are. So unless there's a request, and I'll show I guess in dash if they want to wish to remove either of these two items for separate discussion. Okay, hearing none, then we'll accept the motion in a second. Bob Pape.
Your microphone isn't on.
There you go. Apologize, I had moved the council approved consent agenda items one and two.
And Chris Hands for the second.
Chris Hands, and I'll second that.
Motion and seconded, second made. Madam Clerk, please make the vote.
Member Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands. Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Call.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Moving to the mayor's report. First item under mayor's report is a presentation title, Leading the Way. As I'm sorry, it's an award presentation, and it's by the E T C Institute. And I'm going to turn this over to Chris Tatham from E T C. He's going to let us know what this is all about. Mr. Tatham.
Well, Mayor, it's great to be with you and everyone tonight. If you're not familiar with our firm, we're actually based here in Johnson County. We've been around for about forty years, and we actually started doing surveys for Merriam over thirty years ago. So it's been a long time. Over the past decade and a half or so, we've really expanded our growth. We, in the past ten years, we've surveyed more than three million people across the world. We have conducted surveys for more than a thousand cities and counties, and our clients are now on four continents. In fact, just last week, we landed a big project with Addis Ababa, which is the capital city of Ethiopia. So we're moving to work with Perth, Australia soon. And currently fourteen of the twenty largest U S cities in the country are our clients. As part of that process, we've historically been able to let you know how well you're doing against comparative norms. You know, compared to other communities, how do people rate the quality of life in Merriam? How they rate your streets? During COVID, we decided, we've been asked for a long time, to really identify who the true champions, who are the cities that are really outperforming and setting the standard for all. And that's where our Leading the Way Award comes in. We reviewed survey results from four hundred and fifty-two cities over the past two years or so and their performance in their strategic areas related to customer service, the value for your taxes and fees, and the overall quality of service delivery. It's my pleasure to let you all know that you have won or have been recognized with this eleven-pound crystal trophy because you ranked in the top ten percent of all communities in the country in those areas. In fact, the standard to which you needed to achieve was a two hundred and ten-point scale, a two hundred and ten points on a three hundred-point scale. You were twenty-six points above that, and you rated eighty-two percent above the average community in our study. In fact, the place that you're really setting the standard is with your infrastructure, the way you're caring for your streets, your sidewalks. You are off the charts in just about every category of public work. So again, really, Mayor, I don't have to hand you the trophy. I thought I'd give it out to you. I don't know if the city administrator, you, there it is. That's the, that's the award, and it's eleven pounds of crystal. It represents the first eleven communities that did our survey back in two thousand. Merriam joined a couple of years after that. But all I can say is this is actually a tremendous feat. It doesn't come by accident, and there's a lot to celebrate. I know a lot of times you hear about the bad things with regard to service delivery. I can assure you that your city is setting the standard in many, many ways. So congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Does this mean that maybe three, four years, we'll be able to compare ourselves with Addis Ababa?
You will be. So, and maybe Perth, Australia, and who knows where else.
Yeah. Now, do you get to go to any of those exciting places yourself?
I do. Right now, Australia is off limits to people, so I've been doing all that work remotely. But I've been to Addis Ababa a few times. We also now have a big office in India that employs about fifteen to twenty people. So we're trying to do more and more work around the world to help basically local governments make better decisions. And that's what we're all about.
Well, it's, using your survey has been a great enhancement for our city. It truly does tell us how we rate, not nationally, but with our, with our peers. The citizens have been happy, and they express it in many other ways too, but this is a great validation. And we, we want to thank you for helping us out.
Great, well, I appreciate you letting me join you, just to tell you in person what an accomplishment it really is.
All right, well, you have a great night.
You too, thanks.
Wow, what a wonderful surprise, huh?
Okay. I will tell you that, that it is eleven pounds. It is eleven pounds of crystal. I did not know what it was when it showed up. It came in a very nice satin-lined box, but it, it is something we should absolutely be proud of for our residents and for, for our staff and the efforts they put in. Just glad to share that with the council.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, let's move to the item number two. This is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. This is not the first time I've read this proclamation. And I can attest that everything in it is true, as far as I know. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Merriam. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of its citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Merriam to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-one marks the sixty-first annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Ken System, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May sixteen through twenty-one in the year nineteen twenty twenty-one as National Public Works Week in the city of Merriam. And I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association and the government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, proclaimed this tenth day of May twenty twenty-one. This is a great place in the agenda after having received this E T C survey. Certainly, we, we have always been supportive of our public works. And that's what, it's one of the main reasons why our city is a great city. So, very good. Yep. All right, let's go down to item number three. Wait, that's not right. Let's try with council items. Under the heading of council items, we have three items this evening. The very first one is consider approval of resolution setting of a hearing date in the I thirty-five redevelopment district. Chris, would you like to update the staff on this item?
I, I would, thank you, Mayor. The item before you right now is to consider approval of resolution setting June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one as the date of a public hearing to consider adding area to the I thirty-five redevelopment district. As background, the city's adopted a redevelopment district known as I thirty-five redevelopment district, identifies proposed redevelopment projects within the redevelopment project, or within the redevelopment district. Since its initial adoption, the I thirty-five redevelopment districts have been amended five separate times. The most recent was twenty eighteen, when it was amended to allow for construction of the parking structure that serves the Merriam Community Center and the future Johnson County Library. What the, the public hearing being established tonight is that the, is a statutory requirement. It's basically in anticipation of Drake Development submitting an application for public financing for the redevelopment of the Kmart site, the long vacant Kmart site. Yay. As you are all aware, there's a lot of site challenges at the Kmart location. There's some unsuitable soils, there's potential need for wall retaining walls and possibly structured parking to offset those extraordinary costs. Drake Development will be likely requesting public financing to include tax increment financing. So after conversations with Drake Development, internal conversations with Joe Serrano, our bond counsel from Kutech Rock, staff's recommending that the I thirty-five TIF be expanded to include essentially the Kmart property minus the La Petite facility, which is located at six four ten Antioch Road. So adding that to the I thirty-five redevelopment district and with an additional proposed project area of M, which is listed in your packet. However, I do have to point out that there is an error in the legal description of project area M located on page ten of thirteen of that particular document or page forty-one of your packet. So in your packet, it's page forty-one, but of the document, it's ten of thirteen. That last paragraph under project area M says, but midway through that sentence, it says the northeast portion of the area. It's actually should be the northwest portion of the area. So we need to just point that out in the minutes and let you know that if council approves this, that, that information will be corrected in the official documents that will be sent out. So this is, this is, this is per state statute that we have to declare, or we have to pass a resolution establishing this public hearing. So the public hearing would be the appropriate time for comments and questions about the expansion of I thirty-five TIF. The, what we're asking for tonight is simply to pass the resolution to establish the hearing on June fourteenth. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain a motion for the mayor.
Mr. Neil, do you have a question?
Yes, I was curious as to why the north side of Shawnee Mission Parkway was also included in the, in the area from what we were. The early indications were that the project was going to be primarily on the, in the Kmart area. And so it looks like we're also including some properties on the north side of Shawnee Mission Parkway as well in this. So I was just curious, just for clarification, if it has anything, I mean, what, what is the need for that? For changing the road or?
The, we are not adding any properties on the north side. There are properties, the current I thirty-five TIF, actually, I'll share my screen, might be easier to do. Let's see here. Can everybody see that? Okay, that's, that's the existing TIF. So hoping you can follow my arrow here. So this is where the TIF boundaries are today. This is Shawnee Mission Parkway, this is Slater. This, this is already in the I thirty-five to, to today. With this is the TIF as it's been established for, for, for years. What we're proposing is simply just to add this parcel here. This, the, the north end remains as it does today. So here.
Okay, so it doesn't go all the way over to Antioch on the north side?
Not on the north side, no, sir.
Oh, okay.
Or kind of show you what's getting added there.
Yeah, perfect. It's just, I, I wasn't, I wouldn't, didn't see that.
For clarification, Chris, on the map provided, it does show that it goes toward Antioch. And it may just be the way it's written, but it does appear in the outlined area to go. And again, I think this may be more of an artistic thing than an actual thing. It'll be on Shawnee Mission Parkway to the north.
Okay, we, we will, we will make sure that that is not. I do not believe that it should go to Antioch. This is, this is our working map, but I'll, I'll make sure, I'll verify that.
Thank you.
Good question. Anybody else have a question on this? Okay. Well, then I guess if I, if there are none, Chris is going to end up first, so I'll go ahead and allow a motion if she wishes to make it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Chris Hands, and I'd like to make the motion. I move that the council approve a resolution setting a public hearing date of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to consider amending the I thirty-five redevelopment district and to authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Bob, did you want to second that?
This, Bob, yes, Mayor, I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Call.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Our second item is connected to the first, for different reasons, but it's very important, and it's now the next step in the process. So I'm going to ask Chris to talk about our funding agreement and what the approval of that might mean.
Thanks, Mayor. As the mayor just shared, this is kind of a piggyback item. So this would be consider approval of a funding agreement Drake Development, between Drake Development and the city of Merriam. Drake Development likely will be submitting a TIF application, requesting public financing soon for redevelopment of the Kmart property for the city to make the determination if that's, makes a heck of a lot of sense and how the financing would work and to actually put some people that are a lot smarter than I am around the table that can give us the guidance to decide if that's a worthwhile endeavor at that particular location. We need to hire some outside consultants and some outside legal help. So the, essentially what a finance funding agreement does is Drake Development has given us a sixty thousand dollar check that we have in the safe, assuming the approval of this, we will cash that check tomorrow, or we will put it in the bank tomorrow. And what we will use that sixty thousand dollars for is to hire outside legal and professional consultants to help guide us through this process. The accepted, the approval of this funding agreement, the acceptance of those funds does not obligate the city to do anything beyond approve the funding agreement. It does not obligate us to approve the funding, to award incentives. It is simply so that the city can do the due diligence that it needs to do to determine how this project should move forward without the taxpayers paying for those services. So once again, this is to protect the taxpayers, the, the taxpayers from having to pay for a project that may or may not come to fruition, depending on what these consultants find out. So the, this funding agreement has been drafted and reviewed by Joe Serrano, who's our bond counsel at Kutech Rock. He is on the line. I apologize, I didn't point out before, he also helped with the drafting of the public hearing language resolution before. But I'm happy to answer any questions. This is simply just to accept the sixty thousand dollar and enter into the agreement with Drake.
Mr. Neil.
I just want to make sure that, clarify, you used the term funding agreement and what it, it, it has nothing to do with a funding agreement for any, for the project, but it has, it's funding agreement for the city to get reimbursed for its analysis of the proposed project from the city's perspective. Is that correct?
Yeah, it wouldn't even be reimbursement. We literally will just pay for those consultants with, with that sixty thousand dollars. So they're giving us the sixty thousand dollars. The funding agreement essentially says how, within some limitations, that we would spend that money, but we will use their sixty thousand dollars for our consultants. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about item number two? Okay, I'll accept the motion in a second. Bob, you jumped in front of everybody, go right ahead.
Yeah. Mayor's Bob Pape, I'd move the council approve a funding agreement between the city and Drake Development LLC.
Mr. Neil, would you like to second that?
Yeah, I'd like to second that. Since Ward four, we, we definitely are happy to see some movement there.
Very good, this motion's made and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp.
Aye.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Very good. Before we go to item three, I'd like to come back to something that was said earlier because I want to make sure there's clarification because the map did create a little bit of confusion, I think. But if you look under the description, the written description of area M, which is on page ten of thirteen, it basically states that this, this property is, goes from Eby to Antioch, Shawnee Mission Parkway to Pine Gate subdivision. So the entire Mary, entire Kmart property, other than that little section that's carved out for some existing businesses, would, would be included, just, just for the record, I want to make sure everybody understands that. So there's no misunderstanding as we go forward. Let's go to C I P update, which is item number three. And Jim McDonald, Director, you're going to tell us about the update for C I P, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have your May update, our twenty twenty-one street improvement program, which is the East Frontage Road from sixty-seven to seventy-fifth, the twenty twenty-one mill and overlay program, and our twenty twenty-one sidewalk repair maintenance program. The contractor, which is J M Fagie, just started replacing curbs on Fifty First Place and the east side of Perry Lane. The plan is to start removing the curbs on the west side of Perry Lane tomorrow. Today, they were out removing curbs, the substandard curbs on Fifty Fifth Street between Antioch and Hadley. And their plan is to pour back those tomorrow, along with the curbs on Fifty First Terrace. The, hopefully next week, we'll see them over on the Goodman Street doing the substandard curbs over there and removing the impellers in the street. We plan on getting to Craig's, Craig Road, early June. And the East Frontage Road proposed starting date is going to be about May thirty-first, the East Frontage Road part of the project. The West Vernon Preliminary Engineering Study, we received twenty-seven responses from residents in that area. We mailed out eighty questionnaires, and we received twenty-seven back. And B H C Roads has just completed the limited survey of that area. I know a few of you mentioned that you had, may have some pictures or some video. If you can get those to me quickly, that'd be great, so we can submit those to B H C, so they can review all that information. That's all I have for your May update. I'm free to answer any questions on those items or anything else.
Mr. Silver says his hand up.
Jim, I assume that those trucks that I called about earlier this week had to do with the curb and curb removal that happened this week?
That's a possibility. I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't know what the name was on the side of those trucks, but I mean, Knox does get used by quite a few contractors and water ones doing work over there. But that would just be my assumption, that was Fagie's vehicles and the concrete for that Fifty First sidewalks, or, sorry, curbs.
Okay, that's great. Mystery solved, and I just learned tonight that it was for the good of Merriam.
Yes, exactly.
Any other questions? Bob Pape.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to pass on to Jim our thanks for the good job that his whole department's done in reference to our, getting our award, our E T C award. And please pass on to all of your men and women working for you, the council's, you know, appreciation.
Thank you. I'll let them know, thank you very much.
Very good, and thanks for being here this evening. All right, staff items. Mr. Ringel, we have any staff items this evening?
The only item I have there is next Monday morning, May seventeenth at eight A M. We will have the pushing-in ceremony for the new engine at the fire department. So that's, that's a big deal. That's a nice expensive piece of apparatus that the residents have bought and Overland Park will operate for on our behalf. We will push that in, which is a ceremony that dates back several hundred years to horse-drawn fire wagons when they used to put, get done putting fires out. They would, whatever they do with horses when they're not using them, putting them out to pasture, whatever they do, but then they clean the equipment, they push the equipment back into the garage. So the pushing-in ceremony is usually what they do with, with the first time that you make a piece of apparatus operational. I would defer to Bob if, if I'm incorrect, but that's, I think I'm pretty close. Except for the put out the pasture thing, I kind of made that up.
Chris Hands.
Yeah, so are we going to have any limits? Because I did get to go to one, and it was really quite nice. Limits and crowd size, I mean.
No, probably not. I mean, you know, if we're, we're masked, we can all put a hand on it, push the thing in. I mean, there's, we, we don't all have to be in the front. Some of us can, some of us can pull and some of us can push.
Mr. Silver's.
I was distracted when I was writing something, I missed what the date was for that. Can you please repeat that?
Yes, sir, that is next Monday morning at eight A M. So it's May seventeenth, Monday, May seventeenth, eight A M, pushing-in ceremony upstairs. I'll send a reminder out to the council, but it'll be first thing Monday morning.
Very good. Ain't nothing else then?
I'd be happy to answer any additional questions if you have any.
Okay, well, we don't have an executive session or no new business, as far as I know. This meeting has been pretty short. I'm not sure there's really a need for us to break to get into our budget session. So why don't we adjourn? I'll, I'll need to push obviously a motion a second to adjourn. I'll need to push obviously a motion a second to adjourn this evening. Bob Pape?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
And second, Chris Hands.
Chris Hands, and I'll second that.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.